Call the special meeting of September 23, 2015 of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Eleven present, one absent.
All right, and Commissioner Foley is excused this evening. Commissioner Henderson, please lead us in a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to cry on the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, we'll move into the communication that's the reason for the meeting tonight. Section 1 Communication 15-450. Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager with the Public Works Department, has requested us to have this special meeting to get concurrence for me to sign an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. And Mr. Moore is here to explain. So, Matt?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chief Executive. Really appreciate you having this special council meeting. The reason for it is last Friday I received a communication from the Corps of Engineers that they're getting around to getting Butte Silver Bow's agreement together for Army Corps of Engineer 595 program and it's an environmental-related program. What we're looking at doing is using that money to expand sewer to the west side. She communicated to us that we needed to have this signed by September 30th. That's the end of their fiscal year. If they didn't get the money obligated by the end of their fiscal year, we may not get the money. And it's $300,000. And so, they not knowing how we operate as a municipality and how often we meet as a council, did get this to us too late to make it to last week's council meeting. And so, in order to get the funding, required a special meeting with you guys. And so, that's the reason. It's $300,000 from the Corps of Engineers. We really want to make sure that we get this. If you wanted to read the agreement, it's a very long punishing document. But it's, we've signed two of these before. This is Phase 3 of the same project. It's just providing sanitary sewers to the west side. So, do you have any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Moore? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to concur with Communication 15-450, Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager, to authorize, Chief Executive, to sign an agreement with the Department of the Army and to place it on file.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If there's nothing on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special meeting adjourned.
Let us know, Laura, when we're ready to check in again.
I'm going to sign that.
Okay, everyone check in, please. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee, the whole meeting of September 23, 2015. Could we have roll call, please?
Ten present, one presiding, one absent.
Thank you. Let the record show that Dan Foley is still excused. We'll move along. We already have the pledge and the prayer, so there is really no report of the chair tonight. We'll just move right into our meeting. Excuse me, we'll begin with Section 1, bid opening, Communication Number 15-441. Kristin Rosa, Administrator of the Tax Increment Financing Industrial District, better known as the TIFID, requesting council's authorization for a bid opening on September 23, 2015 for dust control equipment. County Attorney Joyce, do we have proof of publication?
Madam Chair, we do have proof of publications for Section 1, 2, and 3, and all of them appear to be in order.
Thank you. Okay. Kristin, the floor is yours.
And Madam Chair, there is bid security in the form of a cashier's check in the amount of 10% of the bid, which does appear to be in order.
Thank you. County Attorney Joyce, Kristin?
The bid is from Process Control Equipment out of Lehigh, Utah, and the amount is $84,186.
Okay. Kristin, is there an engineering estimate for that?
We did not have this engineered, but our estimate was less than $100,000.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Henderson, question?
Madam Chair, Kristin, could I just ask a question? When you send these out, this bid, to places that you must have known they had them, is there only one that responded to the bid?
Kristin?
Commissioner Henderson, yes, there was only one response. This is a pretty specific kind of installation of dust ventilation equipment. And so, we have worked with Seacast or Montana Precision Products. And while they have identified this one, we did put it out for public bid, and we got no other responses. It was placed in most of the city's builder associations, and we did get a couple calls, but nobody else was interested in bidding.
You did get a, uh, follow-up?
Follow-up, Commissioner Henderson.
Madam Chair, you did get a couple calls, though, that were, they thought about it anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would make a motion that we refer the bids to the TIFID Board and await their approval. Is that what you wanted?
Yep, yes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to refer the bid back to the TIFID Board and to have them come back to this body with their recommendation.
Commissioner Chairman Shaw, I'd like to make a correction, just to refer it to the Public Works Department and to the TIFID Board. So, just a correction.
Okay.
I will second that corrected motion.
So, we have a motion, a corrected motion, in a second, to refer the bid back to the Public Works Department and, along with the TIFID Board, to come back to this body with their recommendation. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kristin. Onward to the Section 2, we have Public Hearing, Communication Number 15-437, Ravanda Stordahl, Executive Director of the Butte Affordable Housing, Incorporated, requesting council's authorization to hold a public hearing on September 23, 2015 regarding the need for a new affordable housing in Butte Silver Bow. And we already have proof of publication. So, Ravanda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, members of council. Butte Affordable Housing is an affiliate of the Public Housing Authority. That arm of the Housing Authority develops and manages affordable properties in Butte. And we are proposing to build a new 32-unit affordable family development adjacent to property that we already own and manage. The property is located east of Meadowlands Apartments and north of Aspen Place Apartments. We intend to apply for funding through the Montana Board of Housing. As part of that process, a public hearing is required to discuss housing needs. We had a market study done that shows a true need for more affordable housing in Butte. Most properties in Butte have a zero vacancy rate, and all of our properties have a waiting list. The market study also showed that 41% of all renter households in Butte are paying more than 35% of their income for rent. So, we know there's a need, and we had a community meeting earlier today at Meadowlands and received support for the project there and no opposition. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Tom Manchreck with Thomas Development, who's our partner in this, to speak about the project also.
Mr. Tom?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Tom Manchreck, Thomas Development, Boise, Idaho. Procedurally, are we going through this process right now, or does it appear later on in the agenda?
Well, no. What will happen is, we'll listen to what you have to say. I'll ask the council members if they have any questions, and then we'll go forward with the public hearing right now.
Okay, terrific. Okay. Ms. Stordahl did an excellent job of explaining the state of affordable housing. And frankly, all apartments in Butte right now, there are no vacancies. Family, senior, affordable market rate, the market study shows no vacancies and a need, an immediate need for 252 apartment rental units in Butte Silver Bow County. A statistic that I think is very interesting is Montana Board of Housing tracks resource allocations literally since 1986. And of the six largest, which was when the program was implemented, yeah, the program was implemented in 1986, and on a population basis, Butte Silver Bow has received 50% of, if everything was distributed equally, 50% less than it should. Kalispell has received 220% more. Missoula has received about 200% more, and it goes on and on. Butte of the seven major cities in Montana, Butte is clearly the most underserved. In the presentation that was made by Ravanda and myself to the Montana Board of Housing Board in Helena on August 10, that statistic was very keenly picked up on by more than one member of the board. And there's a very strong sentiment at Montana Board of Housing to, at the board, to look at this affordable housing resource and make sure that it's fairly uniformly distributed. Andy Urstadt is our architect, and you could turn that around a little bit, Andy. A couple of things contextually, I think, are important. Those of you who have been around for a while remember that Thomas Development built and built Sidney Markovich Construction, constructed what was then called Atherton 1 and Atherton 2. Those are two family affordable communities, which are located just to the right, which is south of the green area, which is the proposed expansion of now Aspen Place. And then the boomerang sheet building is Meadowlands. Our company sold Atherton 1 and Atherton 2 in a part of a very large transaction in 2006. And coming back up to Butte and seeing kind of the condition those properties were in while we were developing Meadowlands, Ravanda and I availed ourselves of an opportunity to reacquire those assets from the company that we sold them to. So, Aspen 1 and Aspen 2 are now owned by an affiliate of the Public Housing Authority and affiliate of Thomas Development. Markovich Construction is 80% complete with about a $1.5 million renovation. So, the expansion, the proposed expansion of Aspen Place would have then four, four separate apartment communities, the three family managed and run together, but all importantly, owned either in full or significantly by a local company. The market study is very strong. Meadowlands is full with a waitlist. Aspen Place, as soon as we renovate a unit, people move back in. There's a tremendous need for housing of this type, actually, all forms of rental housing in Butte Silver Bow. Those of you who've been on the Commission for a while will remember that the property that trends to the north around Meadowlands was subject of a preliminary plat for a subdivision named Granite Peak. As we have continued the financial analysis of what it costs to develop single-family lots and what single-family lots are selling for in this market, and knowing that this property has been zoned.
I was concerned with, you know, how they were looking, and they are definitely looking a lot better. Being on the Commission for quite a few years now, I know there was, it was kind of a controversial thing getting the other apartments approved, it seemed like, before the last project you guys did. But I gotta tell you, that thing turned out excellent. It looks really nice. It really cleaned up that area. So, you know, this one, I'm sure will be the same, and it looks really good. So, I strongly support it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, well, no further ado. We'll open the public hearing. And the way this works, this is a first call for proponents, and if there's anybody that would like to speak on behalf of this project, please come to the microphone on either side, give us your name and address for the record.
I am Bill Markovich. I reside at 43 Tranquility Lane, Butte. This is home like it's home for all of you people. I appreciate your time here tonight on this project. I have a lot to do with multifamily in our community, from an ownership point of view and from taking care of customers all the time. We constantly cannot serve renters looking for properties, looking for rentals in our office on a regular basis, but probably have some similar experiences. Okay, we need some more units. This is 32 units. We'll add to the portfolio of affordable housing in our community. We're underserved in our community. We've been kind of cheated by the system a little bit, okay, quite honestly. We've had no one to stand up and pound the gavel and say, hey, you know what? We want some more affordable housing in our community. This is an opportunity. We've done a lot of projects for Thomas Development. We're presently engaged in sprucing ups to the tune of almost a million and a half dollars at Atherton 1 and 2, which are now called Aspen 1 and 2. And it's making a big difference. John mentioned that it visually looking better, and it is. Okay, we've been there since May. We'll be there for another month and a half, and we'll be wrapping up and moving on. Hope to be involved in the next project. It's a good use. It's a step down between the highway, as was mentioned, to a nice neighborhood. It's a compliment to Waterford, an adjoining property up there. It's a good use, and it has a serious need in our community. Thank you.
Bill? Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. Seeing none, I'll open for any opponents for the project. First call for opponents. Please come to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address for the record.
Name's Ed Pape, 1714 Harrison Avenue and 3011 Dixon. I just kind of took offense to what the gentleman said about jacking up rental rates. I have a rental, and the only time I raise the rent is when you raise my taxes. So, it doesn't have any effect on whether there's affordable housing available. And I'm curious about this market study. Do we have access to that, being the public? Because there's vacancies in Butte, and there's a lot of houses for sale in Butte. And I just, I'm curious, he mentioned a single-family unit and the cost of it, but he didn't say what that cost was. I'm kind of curious about that. Because there are a lot of homes for sale in Butte. So, I don't know what studies he's going by, but I'd certainly like to look at them. I don't qualify for affordable housing, because I have a business. Otherwise, I would, because I don't make any money. And it seems that those houses are a lot nicer than what I live in. So, I guess maybe on the pro side, I might be moving into one shortly. But anyway, I would like to know what study or where I can have access to it, and what, when he mentioned single-family unit cost, then he went back to reevaluate this. I'd like to know what that is. You know, is that affordable, or what's the amount of a single-family unit? I mean, how much is this going to cost? Because whether it comes out of Butte Silver Bow money, I'm still paying for it with my federal taxes. I'm paying for it one way or the other. So, I'd kind of like to know how much I'm paying. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Third and final call for opponents. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Moving on to the next section is Section 3, Public Hearing, Communication 15-438. Ravanda Stordahl, Executive Director of Butte Affordable Housing, Inc., requesting council's authorization to hold a public hearing on September 23, 2015 regarding the proposed tax exemption of Aspen Place Apartments, Phase 3. Ravanda, you're on again.
Thanks. Madam Chairperson, members of the council, as part of the application to the Montana Board of Housing for low-income housing tax credits, it is usually necessary for a property to be exempt from property taxes in order for it to remain an affordable property. When we do pro forma to determine the rental amounts, the exemption of property taxes would make a difference in the amounts of rents that we can charge. Just so you know, Mountain View Apartments is one of our properties that is tax-exempt. Meadowlands was tax-exempt. Aspen 1 and 2 are not tax-exempt, and we are not going to ask those to be tax-exempt. One thing that could happen for a tax-exempt property is that we could pay a payment in lieu of taxes, like the Public Housing Authority does. So, that's something that we could consider. It's just, it's a determination by the council and our application to the state to be tax-exempt.
Tom Manchreck, again. Let me just add one thing to what Ravanda said. The tax credit is a federal resource that's allocated annually based on state's population as compared to the population of the whole country. Montana gets about $2,600,000 in tax credits each year. The demand for credits exceeds the supply. If we were going to do 252 units in Butte, that would show up about three years' worth of allocation. That won't happen. But each and every year, for as long as I've been doing this, Montana Board of Housing and other states have, somebody wants to build in Missoula, and there's a tremendous need in Missoula. Somebody wants to build out in the oil field, and there's a tremendous need. And so, each state comes up with scoring criteria to see which is the best deal. And Montana is not unique at all. So, the state recognizes this is a finite resource, and if a developer is able, developer owner is able to get some local support, financial support, that factors very heavily into the scoring process. So, it's a resource that you have to compete for. You have to do a great job. And this state and many others are looking to localities to say, if you really want this, what can you do to help? And Ravanda is just exactly right. Aspen 1 and Aspen 2 are, by statute, could be exempt from property taxes tomorrow. That's what Montana law provides. We're not going to ask for that. Those deals are done. But this would help the chances, participation by Butte Silver Bow would help the chances of this application funding. And I remember when we were discussing Meadowlands that we had some fee and lieu discussions for that, and certainly that's something we're more than willing to entertain.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? The subject of the proposed tax exemptions of Aspen Place Apartments, Phase 3. Commissioner Perdude Owen.
Ms. Stordahl, I'm guessing that regardless of this tax exemption, Aspen Place Apartments is going forward?
Ravanda?
Commissioner Perdude Owen, members of the council, it may be difficult for it to go forward without a property tax exemption.
Could you repeat?
It may be difficult for it to go forward without a property tax exemption.
It probably won't fund.
It probably won't be funded by the state, by Montana Board of Housing.
Follow-up, Commissioner Perdude Owen. So, this vote tonight is going to be a make or break situation?
Commissioner Perdude Owen, members of the council, this is just a public hearing to discuss it. It's not a vote by this council to determine that.
Simply an opportunity for the public to respond.
Yeah. Well, but we, well, we're having discussion.
It's just a public hearing, then?
Right, exactly. It's just a public hearing. That's correct.
Exactly.
That's right.
Okay.
I will say this, though, that it's, the scoring is very, very tight. There are a number of very good tax credit developers in the state of Montana. And it's not an overstatement to say that local support, points for local support or lack thereof. And we didn't write the definition of what local support is. It's monetary. There are, you know, cities give developers land, they do, you know, all kinds of things to foster these developments. And it will be a big determinative in the scoring, and it may be a make or a break.
Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, I'd like to go on record supporting this application. And I'd like to point out that even though it's tax-exempt status they're asking for, there's still fees like garbage and landfill and water, sewer, they're still paid. It's just the property tax itself that is not collected. That is exempt.
Further questions for staff? All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Again, this is a call for proponents. Are there any proponents that would like to speak on behalf of this proposal? Second call for proponents. Third and final call for proponents. At this time, I would ask for any opponents. Mr. Markovich?
Bill Markovich, 43 Tranquility Lane. Once again, the need for the project is important to our community. The need is definitely there, okay? It's been documented. We need more affordable housing units in our community. Our community is underserved, and we haven't quite got our fair share of tax credit affordable housing units in our community that we deserve. So, I suggest that you seriously consider this, and if you could support it, it would be a beneficial thing for our community.
I assume you're a proponent. I was on the opponent, so.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We'll take your comments, but just for the record, that is a proponent.
It's a great project for our community. And it's small. It's 32 units. We have a need of over 250 units. It's 32 units, but it's a nice infill project. It's already serviced by water. It's already serviced by sewer. Utilities are nearby. It's an infill project that doesn't tax our community at any length. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, we're back on opponents. The second call for opponents.
That's Edward Pape, 1714 Harrison, 3011 Dixon. I have a problem with the words that they keep using, like usually, you know, necessary for low-income housing to be tax-exempt. What does that mean, usually? You know, I mean, either it is or it's not a requirement to be tax-exempt. It's not a usually or a probably. And then I keep hearing that we're not going to ask for tax-exempt for Aspen 1 and 2. Who's we're? Do you profit from this?
We own Aspen 1 and 2, yes.
Okay, well, I would love to have a business tax-exempt as well, you know. So, I was just curious who we were. But I don't understand why you need a tax-exempt status to build low income. Usually doesn't define that. It's either you need to or you don't. And if this council makes decisions on words like usually and probably, I can see why I'm going to be here every week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Last call for any opponents. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. At this point in our agenda, I will call for any public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. Any public comment tonight on tonight's agenda? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move forward. Section 4 is Communication Number 15-264. Frances P. McGee, 125 West Granite Street, requesting council work with residents in the Clark's Park area to enforce noise restrictions, prohibitions against fall from the park, and enforce the 10:00 PM closure time. Commissioner McDonough, is your district out of first?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In light of the fact that I was gone for two weeks, I had discussed with the Park and Rec Director, Mr. Gallagher, and the Public Works Director, Mr. Schultze, about scheduling a meeting at some point upon my return. Will look to do that and evaluate Clark's Park in terms of maybe some alternatives, or at least evaluate the situation for noise control. At this point, the splash pad is closed for the season, so it's not a pending issue at this moment. And the fall from the park has been discussed, but we're going to revisit it, I think, with the Park and Rec, the new Park and Rec Director and the Park and Rec Board. So, I would ask that we hold it in abeyance until we have the meeting and report back to the body.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonough. I see JP Gallagher in the audience. Does he want to add to that, JP, or would you just prefer that we hold it in advance? prefer that we hold it in advance? I'll give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like to do that, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw, just in, in some of the information I've gathered on this, I, I agree to go to events, and, but as, as I've researched this a little bit, just knowing that, talking to everybody that was involved during the time that the park splash pad was there, there was no, there was nothing within the design or anything that was, said that there would be any kind of noise barrier there. But I, I agree, we can refer to this to the, to Parks and Rec Board, and we can discuss this with the neighborhood.
Thank you, JP, appreciate that. So we will continue to hold this in advance, and just for the record, when is the next Parks and Rec's board meeting, do you know?
October 20th.
October 20th? Thank you. Okay. Section 5, Communication Number 15-356. Kenneth and Michelle Palmer, 936 Zerelda Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. I attended the Land Sales Committee meeting today, and there's a lot of rather interesting discussion, this is an area that is sort of a status quo, possible alley, possible prescriptive use, and, and I'm glad this was brought up, just because we need to kind of clean up some of the details on this part of town, it's Henry and Zerelda and Hornet Street. We do have an, an arrangement with the Palmers, and they are going to have a survey done on their, on their own dime, and we will proceed like we normally do, and it's being worked out, so at this time, I would just ask that we hold it in advance as we await that survey to be done. Section 6, Communication 15-358. Brendan McDonough, Butte Silver Bow Commissioner, District 8, requesting a review of zoning ordinances regarding the keeping of horses on property within the city limits. Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I had left for town, I believe that I, I had made the motion that we concur with the communication and place it on file, and the Planning Department was going to come back with the ordinance, or ordinance changes, excuse me, to address the issue at hand, so I don't believe it should still be on the agenda, I just want to ask for clarification of, it was noted in the record that we had concurred and placed on file and took the vote, and.
Commissioner McDonough would rather be in a note and place on file, because we're not really concurring with anything, unless you're, are they reviewing the zoning ordinance?
They reviewed the zoning ordinance, and I made the motion to concur and place on file based on a discussion with Planning Director Sessow and the county attorney at the last committee of the whole meeting, and they said that, or, Mr. Sessow indicated that he would come back to this body with the proposed ordinance changes so that we could affect the change. So, I did make the motion to concur and place on file, and we did have a second, and I believe that we voted it up, so I, I, I think it doesn't belong on the agenda, but just need to clarify that.
All right, so I'll just have Karenisa take it off the agenda, that it's officially been concurred and placed on file. Okay, very good, thank you, Brendan. Section 7, Communication Number 15-414. Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records Office, requesting council's authorization to hold the tax deed sale public auction on September 16th, 2015, and to ask the county attorney to prepare a resolution authorizing the sale of the properties to be fine, final read at the September 16th meeting, which we did do. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Morgan to cross-reference this with that resolution. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll make a motion that we cross-reference Communication 15-414 with Resolution 15-42 and place this communication on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cross-reference Communication 15-414 with Resolution 15-42 and places on file. Is there anything further on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Section 8, Communication Number 15-415. Robert A. Makaroski, Director, Butte Silver Bow Land Office, requesting council's authorization for the sale of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy, and for council to ask the county attorney to prepare the resolution indeed for the transfer of the property. This is the Klobuchar couple that we're asking to do, enter into an agreement with the county. Commissioner Walker, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Shaw. In the meeting today, we decided that we're going to wait for another reappraisal by the Department of Revenue to see if they can find a better value for these two pieces of property, or actually, it's one piece, two lots. So I had to ask us to continue to hold this in advance.
Okay, we'll do so, thank you. Thank you for that update. Section 9, Communication 15-437. Ravanda Stordahl, Executive Director, Butte Affordable Housing, Inc., requesting council's authorization to hold a public hearing on September 23rd, 2015 regarding the need for new affordable housing in Butte Silver Bow. I forgot to say thank you for coming tonight, and I apologize for the little bit of angst you had earlier today, but your proof of publication was perfect, so, and thanks for everyone being here tonight, and we're really looking forward to this project, it's going to be a, a good one, so thank you for being here. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, being that we held the public hearing, I'll make a motion that we place Communication 15-437 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 15-437 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Section 10, Communication 15-438. Ravanda Stordahl, Executive Director, Butte Affordable Housing, Incorporated, requesting council's authorization to hold a public hearing on September 23rd, 2015 regarding the proposed tax exemption of Aspen Place Apartments, Phase 3. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held this public hearing tonight, I'll make a motion that we place Communication 15-438 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 15-438 on file. Anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Section 11, Communication 15-441. Kristen Rosa, Administrator, Tax Increment Financing Industrial District, the TIFID, requesting council's authorization for a bid opening tonight on the 23rd of September for dust control equipment. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held this bid opening tonight, I'll make a motion that we place Communication 15-441 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 15-441 on file. Is there anything further on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Section 12, Communication Number 15-443. David Schultz, Director, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting council's authorization for a bid opening on October 7th, 2015 regarding solid waste collection. I will continue to hold it in advance until that time. At this time, we, excuse me, oh, Commissioner Fisher, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to note on this communication that, you know, we're always subject to red rubber stamping and things up here. If you notice in today's paper, there is a ad for bid proposals on this communication, which was in today's Montana Standard, and it is on our agenda for tonight's meeting, so it just kind of gives the appearance to the public that we may be rubber stamping some things, because the bid is in the newspaper this morning, and I'm sure that's so that we get our six days between them proposals, and it's on our agenda tonight, so that just has an appearance to the public that does not appear proper for us. Thank you.
Duly noted. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Palmer. And Commissioner Ralph.
Madam Chair, just a point of clarification, this communication was on the regular meeting agenda, we approved it to concur with the request and hold it in advance in committee of the whole until that time. So we did approve it, so it was approved prior to publication in the paper. Just want to point that out.
Commissioner Ralph, did you have a comment?
I was going to make the same comment.
Thank you, thank you for that, Dave. At this time, we open up our audience to any public comment on any public matter that's not on tonight's agenda.
Oliver Banrod, 26th Hall and Grand Avenue. Reference community councils. I would like to thank Commissioner Fisher for his positive, public-friendly comment last week. Unfortunately, we have a chicken or, or the egg situation. The people are not going to form groups until this body demonstrates that you are willing to concur with the laws, the constitutional law of Butte Silver Bow, and develop some procedural rules, otherwise, what's the use? The people are asking that you create a system similar, not the same as, similar to the ad hoc committee system. Call for, authorize, and recognize by this body to advise this body on major policy issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any further comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Ed?
Once again, I'm Ed Pape, 1714 Harrison, and I'd just like to mention that, I know some are still here, but when you present something to the council, I would think that you'd want to remain at the meeting if you really care about this community, not just leave right after your agenda item. But, I'd like to pass this out, maybe, I couldn't make a bunch of copies, but maybe if the chief executive could keep those for, I had to call a couple of times, just for the record, I am a disabled veteran, I don't like to flaunt that, I don't like to use it for any means, I haven't read your snow removal thing, but if you want to pass those around so the commissioners can see, I, I've got a lot of sidewalk to shovel, and I shovel it, I've got a bad back, and I rest, and I shovel some more. Last couple winters, we've had pretty good snow. I run a bar, and so I'm up a lot of times at 2:33 in the morning when these snow removal trucks go about 40 miles an hour down Harrison Avenue and throw all the snow that I just shoveled onto my sidewalk. I understand I can't throw it all in the street, if you'll notice from the pictures, a lot of it's up along my sidewalk, my fence, and that's where I put it, or I throw it in my yard. I don't appreciate the county throwing it back on my sidewalk and making me do my walks again. Last couple years, we've had decent snow, which is a good thing for our community, but it's not a good thing if you have to shovel it two or three times, because the county keeps putting it back on my sidewalk. As you can see, my car got stuck, they buried it one time down in front of my house. Fortunately, there was no damage, but I've watched these guys, and they travel 40 to 45 miles an hour down the side of the street throwing snow up onto the sidewalks. If you look at the 2014 winter, number three there, I mean, that was all shoveled, and then they threw that, all that snow back on my sidewalk. And some of them on 2014 winter there, you can see where I put my snow along my fence, so I don't throw it in the street, so they, and I know that's part of your ordinance, I haven't read the new one yet, but you can tell the way it's stacked up that the county does that. I don't know if they're supposed to remove it, but they don't. It sits there, and cars pull up and push it even further up on my sidewalk. It's getting to the point, at my age, it's pretty hard to shovel the walks, and so I would appreciate it if you would address this with Public Works, so that in the winter, they're not hauling ass down Harrison, throwing snow back on sidewalks. I don't know what their hurry is, but it's also pretty dangerous, because they're going well over the 35 mile an hour speed limit. Last thing I'd like to do is pass these to Brendan McDonough, is that correct, how you pronounce your name?
McDonough.
You're my commissioner as far as where I live, and one for Jim Fisher, because I have a rental property there, and since nobody got ahold of me after two, three weeks of coming here, I thought I'd write my phone number down, because I'd like to know how you get things on, agenda items, instead of coming up here and speaking publicly, because obviously you ignore what I comment here, so I would like to be able to put it on the agenda, so you have to address some of my concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed. Anything further to come before us tonight? Brendan, Commissioner McDonough?
I know this is not probably the appropriate time or place, but Mr. Pape, I've never been contacted one time, I've never received a single phone call, so I'm more than happy to discuss the issue with you, but I've never been contacted for the record.
So, we don't have a meeting next week, there's five Wednesdays in the month of September, and just for the record, that we, we will not be meeting next week, our next meeting will be October 7th, so we'll see you then, maybe? Thank you all for coming, is there anything else to come before us this evening? Okay. Commissioner Morgan.
I'll make a motion adjourned. Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second, is it all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for coming.